Since it is four o'clock, I call this meeting of the Cochise County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let us begin with roll call. We'll start with District One. Mr. Montgomery.
Miss President.
Mr. Limbach.
Present.
Depew is present. Mr. Watkins.
Present.
Mr. Young, I understand, is on the line.
Present.
Mr. Young.
Present.
We'll give him a minute. Mr. Gonzalez is absent. Mr. Marzky.
Present.
Mr. Saunders.
Present.
And Ms. Fickett.
Present.
Mr. Young, are you with us? We will count Mr. Young absent for the time being. Okay.
Can you hear me now? Hello?
While we're waiting, I'd like to welcome Ms. Patty Fickett, District Three, to the Commission. Thank you. Mr. Young, can you hear us? You try that one more time.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
One more time. Maybe if we could put the rules on the screen, I could read those while you're working Thank you. These are the ground rules for this evening. Please turn off cell phones or silence your ringers. Please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause. No applause, no booing, no cheering. If you desire to speak, fill out a speaker information form and submit it to the planning staff before the start of the meeting. This is not required for docket applicants. Speakers must use the microphone to capture comments. We observe the following time limits. Each speaker is limited to five minutes for call to public, 10 minutes for applicant's statement, five minutes for supporters or those opposed, and five minutes for applicant's rebuttal. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three commissioners are from cities. At least six commissioners are from unincorporated areas. A commissioner's service is pro bono. A quorum is five commissioners. A majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote fails. For special use permits, a tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. Special use dockets are approved by the commission. Appeals of special use decisions are considered by the Board of Supervisors. Appeal procedures can be found on the county website. For additional assistance, contact the case planner. Other docket decisions than special use requests result in a recommendation forwarded by the commission to the Board of Supervisors. To voice an opinion regarding a recommendation, you may attend the Board of Supervisors' public At this time, call to the public is on our agenda pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.01H. This is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the commissioner's jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Are there any speakers in the room or online for public comment?
Madam President, this is Mr. Young. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Nice to hear you.
I joined over audio on the phone.
Moving along.
If I can interrupt, I'm sorry. Mr. Young, we actually have your phone muted, so you can just use Teams.
We need to approve the minutes of the January 2024 meeting. Are there any comments? I need a motion to approve the January minutes.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Saunders. A second.
Second.
Mr. Limbach. Let's do a roll call vote for approval. Mr. Montgomery.
I approve.
Mr. Limbach.
Present.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
I'm staying.
Mr. Gonzalez is not here. Mr. Marzky.
Present.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Ms. Fickett, you have stayed standing. Chair votes aye. Moving on to public hearings. Docket SU 23-30 is DW Tower requesting authorization for 180-foot lattice communication tower. Mr. Taylor, your presentation.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is the staff presentation for docket SU 2330. An applicant initiated special use authorization request for a communication facility with 180-foot tower. The applicant, as you stated, Madam Chair, is DW Tower. Representative is Michael Fraser. Property is located on Interstate 10, about exit 366. The parcel number is 30228003. The current zoning district is general business. Plan designation is developing the growth area C, rural communities. The current use of the property is undeveloped. The proposed use is a communication facility within 180-foot tower, showing the property's location approximately 110 miles from our current location in the Board of Supervisors' Zoning map shows the subject property is Zone GB. Surrounding properties are zoned R36 residential district and some rural districts as well to the south of I-10 and to the north of I-10 Business Loop. These photos show the property again from the Business Loop, viewing south and southeast. Additional photos showing the Business Loop itself, which is approximately where the project site is. Mostly, it's closer to the Business Loop than I-10 proper. An applicant exhibit showing the subject property. This does include the parcel immediately to the east, which has a convenience store, though that parcel was not subject to the special use request. This small corner at the northwest corner is the project site. Another applicant exhibit, again, showing the approximate location of the property in relation to the project site and where the proposed tower would be within a fenced And one last to show the site plan, showing the requested setbacks from the edge of right of way, the property lines, as well as within the leased area. Applicant rendering showing, this would be viewing west on the Business Loop, with the tower at the lower right corner. Another rendering by the applicant on the left-hand side, showing the tower. This would be a view to the south from the Business Loop. As the commission is aware, there are 10 special use authorization factors applicable to each special use request that is used by staff and the commission to evaluate the appropriateness of the application. As proposed, the special use application complies with five of the six applicable factors. These include the adopted plan, zoning district purpose, adequate services and infrastructure, public input, and off-site impacts. Some additional points. This is a pretty ideal location. It's along a major roadway. It's bound between Interstate 10, Interstate Business Loop, and Railroad right-of-way. There are very large acreages, predominantly agricultural and undeveloped, with very limited concentrated residential development. And staff has not received any opposition from any of the notified property owners. Factors not in favor. The applicant is requesting waivers to reduce setbacks. That would be a waiver from the site development standard criteria. And there are four factors that did not apply, and that would be development along major streets, traffic circulation, hazardous materials, and water conservation. It is important to note that the Business Loop does fall under the jurisdiction of the Arizona Department of Transportation. The applicant mailed letters to surrounding property owners on 28 December, and between 17 and 24 December, staff sent out notices, posted the property, and published a legal Just a re-dozing of Section 2.51. These are the criteria that pertain to new towers: Arizona licensed registrants, co-location requirements, compliance with FAA and FACC requirements. Again, setbacks to property lines, lease area boundary, and edge of right-of-way. Maximum height is determined by the zoning district, although with a special use, that height can be significantly expanded. No noise or vibration nuisances associated with these facilities. And then, for any abandoned facility at 12 months, it could be removed. Well, the request could be removed from the county. And Madam Chair, Commissioners, that concludes staff's presentation of the application, SU 2330.
Thank you. The applicant, Michael Fraser, in the room? Is the time for your statement? You have 10 minutes, please.
Hello. Thank you. My name is Michael Fraser. I'm with DW Tower. The applicant, we're proposing a 180-foot communications tower in the area outlined in the presentation. The parcel, the subject parcel, is approximately 48 acres, and we will lease one acre parcel in the northwest corner and have a fenced-in area for a compound and tower no larger than 100 feet square. We have received comment back from Arizona Department of Transportation and working through that process with them for an easement, and it seems fairly simple and straightforward. We also received a comment from Arizona Game and Fish Department, and don't see anything of significance there that needs to be of concern. I think the staff presentation pretty well covers the application and explains it, but wanted to see if there was any questions that I could answer for anyone.
Yes, sir. I'm sure we will have questions for you.
Okay.
We'll call you back.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I declare the public hearing open. This is the time for comments from other persons, either in favor of or against. Are there any speakers to this subject? Online? Hearing none. That section of the hearing is closed. We will assume the applicant waves his rebuttal to those noncomments. This is the time for commission discussion. You may address your questions to the applicant or to staff. Do I hear I have any questions?
I do.
Mr. Saunders.
Is this an existing tower that's there now?
No, sir. It's undeveloped land.
So the tower that's in the photo is just something been put in as a concept?
Yes, sir. It's a photo simulation. Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach.
Do you already have in-line proposed lease agreements with carriers?
We do not have an agreement signed yet, but the anchor tenant is Verizon.
And then, the requirements indicate three, at least three carriers. Does that comply with that?
Yes, I believe the purpose of that ordinance is that the structure be able to carry up to three carriers, and we will have the tower engineered to be able to carry up to four.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Questions?
Mr. Montgomery.
We could see the image of the tower or some kind of tower that was there a minute ago with the truck. That's my only question. Is that a generic photo or is that an accurate representation?
That's a generic photo, but the tower will be that size and almost, I will say, almost identical in.
Okay. That's 180 feet there.
Yeah. Coming in today on the north side of the tunnel, there is a tower that looks just like that at the same height.
I know.
That's what it looked like, yes, sir.
That was my only question. Is that an accurate representation?
Yeah, it's just a resi-- yeah, it is.
Thank you.
The Verizon will be at the very top. Their antennas will not protrude above the top of the tower, but the tip of their antenna will be, their antennas will be at 180.
Appreciate it.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Young?
None.
I have a couple.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to ask you and staff, are there any other towers like this in the county that we know of that have this diminished setback?
I can speak on that a little. There is another communication site similar in stature, about 2.8 miles to the northwest. It's quite a ways north of the interstate and the community of Bowie. I did also look at two other tower structures in the town of Bowie. One is owned by Valley Telecom at their central office, so to speak. It's very short and inadequate, really. It's not large enough and high enough to carry what would need to be carried as far as equipment. And there's also another small tower nearby that one that is owned by the railroad for their own communications.
Thank you. What I'm concerned about is the fall ratio.
Yes, ma'am.
And this letter is 105 miles per hour. Pretty good for around here. But there's a lot of language. Highly unlikely that it will fail. Most likely, the failure would be within one or more of the upper portion. Likely, most likely, a lot of language, a little uncertain, and I wonder, I just don't know if we have any experience of that with Cochise County.
Well, we would propose to have the tower manufacturer engineer stamp a letter of design that would show that the tower would fall within a certain footage and stay within that setback from the main highway.
Have you had any feedback from Sulphur Springs Electric due to their power line within the fall?
No, I have not. My intent is to have a power coordination walk with them over here the next couple weeks. I did reach out to Valley Telecom, but I have not reached out to Sulphur Springs yet. Will consult with them about their easement and distance from the power line. We'd like to stay. We do build a lot of these communication sites, and a lot of times are very close to the distribution lines. Transmission lines are a different story. You'd need to be quite a ways away from them, but in this case, I think the location we selected is far enough away from those power lines to be approved by Sulphur Springs.
All right. Have we had any sign-off staff from Sulphur yet? Will we make sure we get that?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair, we will have comments. We will solicit comments from Sulphur Springs during the permitting process.
Okay, so that is yet to happen. It has not been concluded.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So as long as all these things are looked into and taken care of once the permit is issued, Ms. Fickett?
There is a tower very similar to that that sits in Sanso, and it's been there for a good 15 years.
That's good to know.
Yes. If that would help you. Yes, it is. And they seem to, I see them over maintaining it pretty often, so.
All right. Those are all the questions that I had. Is there anything else?
Thank you.
And thank you. Mr. Taylor, would you give your summary and recommendation, please?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, staff recommends conditional approval of docket SU 2330 for an existing, excuse me, for a proposed communication tower supporting ground equipment. If the commission wishes to ground approval, staff recommends the following condition: The proposed 180-foot communication tower shall be a minimum of 138 feet to the north property line slash edge of Interstate 10 Business Loop right-of-way, and a minimum of 22 feet from the east and south leased boundary lines, as represented on the site plan. Would like to note that even though we're looking at 22 feet within the boundary lines, there's well over 1,000 feet to the south property line, as well as to the east property lines. It's a fairly significantly large parcel. Standard conditions related to the acceptance of conditions, permitting requirements and timeframes, and modifications to an approved special use have not been modified by this request, and that would be staff's only condition for the recommendation.
I'd like to call for the motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Marzky.
I move to approve docket SU 23-30, Bowie Communications Tower. The conditions of approval recommended by staff, factors in favor of approval constitute the findings in fact.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Watkins? Is there any discussion of this motion?
Might make a comment. You were wondering about the dropping of the tower. I worked a long time for Apple as a transmission manager. We never had a failure on a lattice tower. The only failure that I have ever known of is one in South Dakota, where they took down about five of those towers at one time, and one in New Mexico, which I worked on and reestablished them. And in every case, there was a lack of maintenance, or somebody did not tighten the anchoring bolts or guys. And in the case of the one in New Mexico, it was actually a, what do I want to say? A prime mover. What happened is the people who didn't like its tower loosened up all the bolts on the bottom, and the power line went down. That's the only cases I've ever heard of, and especially these three mega towers, they're pretty solid.
Thank you, Mr. Marzky. Anyone else? Do a roll call vote on this. Mr. Montgomery?
Aye to approve.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Marzky?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Passes. Thank you very much. An individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office Monday through Friday 8 to 5, or online at cochise.AZ.gov. Our second item, docket R24-01, staff is requesting changes and additions to zoning regarding agritourism. Mr. Coxworth.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This is a staff-initiated amendment to the Cochise County zoning regulations to support agricultural tourism in Cochise County. The goals of agricultural tourism include promoting local agriculture, supporting rural communities, and providing educational and recreational experiences for visitors. This type of tourism is not only benefits farmers and rural communities by diversifying income sources, but also fosters a better understanding of the agricultural industry and encourages tourism. Go to Slide 3, please. The proposed changes allow agritourism by right as a permitted accessory use in RU, which is our rural zoning district, and PD, our planned development zoning district. It would require a special use permit in the R residential zoning district on sites that meet the definition of general agriculture, which is essentially our ag-exempt status from zoning. Currently, most types of agritourism would require a special use in RU and approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Next slide. The proposed changes also include removing from the definition of wine tasting room, the exemption from permitting a wine tasting room. And to clarify, currently, if a land, if a property is a vineyard, is ag exempt because they have at least five acres of a commercial commodity, meaning the grapes, under cultivation, then they are not required to get a non-residential permit for the wine tasting room, and we are removing that. So going forward, if passed by this Board of Supervisors, a non-residential permit would be required, allowing staff the opportunity to review these permits to ensure compliance with site development standards, federal ADA compliance to include building code. Since the public is invited into these facilities, we want to ensure that they are constructed Next slide. As the commission knows, the P&amp;Z met on January 10 and provided feedback to staff about the proposed changes. We have made those recommended changes by the commission in the attached Exhibit A. The highlights include the removal of enterprise. Didn't see the need to include that verbiage. Also, we made a clarification of overnight RV parking. We also made an additional change where agritourism would be required as a permitted accessory use, but guest lodging would be subject to the densities of the parcel. So that would be subject to one residence, more than likely RU4, per four acres. That would thereby limiting the amount of guest lodging that could take place on the property, depending on the acreage of the property, to include RV, overnight parking. The proposed definition of agritourism, which is in your packet in Exhibit A, next slide. And then, again, just from the work session, the types of agritourism, we are making it a little bit more easy to permit here in Cochise County. And then, the final slide is really, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions and a sample motion for you.
Thank you, Mr. Coxworth. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Mr. Young, do you have any?
No, ma'am.
I think we're good then. Like to call for the motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach.
I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of docket R-24-01, supporting agritourism and amendments to Articles 2.03, 2.15, 2.18, 2.42, and 2.48 of the Cochise County zoning regulations as outlined in Exhibit A.
Thank you. A second?
Aye.
Mr. Marzky? Any further discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Marzky?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
And Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous? Can move this docket number to the Board of Supervisors, and anybody that would like to appeal that can speak to the clerk?
Correct. It'll be heard by the Board of Supervisors at their March 12 meeting for final approval or denial.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Coxworth, for incorporating all our suggestions from last month.
No, thank you for the.
Well done.
That's what we need from you.
That concludes our agenda items for the planning and zoning meeting. It's time to call for the planning director's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy Valentine's Day to all of you. We'll get you out of here early and take your significant others to dinner, correct? Maybe. And thank you, Ms. Pickett, for volunteering to be on the commission. Her and I had a nice discussion prior to this meeting. In March, you, we have three dockets. They will all be handled by Mr. Taylor. We have a downzoning, but in that downzoning, it requires a comp plan change. We have a rezoning from RU4 to general business, and then another downzoning to RU4. Includes.
Thank you very much. Is there anything the Commissioners would like to speak to? I have one thing, one silly little thing, that small microphone. Our tall gentleman speakers are having trouble speaking into it. I noticed that at the BOS meetings, too. You look at them from behind, and they're all crunched over like this.
Be happy to make that complaint to our county administrator.
Yeah, thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, they could set it up or down on something. If that is all there is, we will consider this meeting adjourned. Thank you.